We'll call this public meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the Republic of Washington, states one nation, united, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world, and also for those who have passed away in our community, especially Crane Holmes and Debbie Evans. Please keep the Holmes and Evans family in your prayers this evening. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. McAndrew? Mr. Dunneehue?
Here. Dispense with the reading in a minute.
Third Order 3A. Lackawanna County Planning Commission subdivision and land development evaluation reports reviewed March 11th, 2022, March 16th, 2022, and April 6th, 2022. 3B. Correspondence received from OECD regarding code enforcement report for council complaints dated April 19th, 2022. 3C. Regional Planning Commission Annual Report 2021, prepared by the Lackawanna County Department of Planning and Economic Development, received April 20th, 2022. 3D. Minutes of the Scranton Firefighters Pension Commission meeting held February 16th, 2022. 3E. Minutes of the Scranton Firefighters Pension Commission meeting held March 16th, 2022. 3F. Minutes of the Non-Uniform Municipal Pension Board meeting held March 16th, 2022. 3G. Agenda for the Non-Uniform Municipal Pension Board meeting held April 20th, 2022. 3H. Minutes of the Scranton Police Pension Commission meeting held March 16th, 2022. 3I. Single tax office city funds distributed comparison report 2021-2022, year-to-date April 15th, 2022. 3J. Minutes of the Composite Pension Board meeting held March 16th, 2022.
Are there any comments on any of the third order items? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I have one. I mentioned this last week, but I just wanted to remind the public that this Saturday, there will be the Pinebrooks, Pinebrook Family Arts Festival taking place from 12 to 4:00, and that will be held at 927 Capous Street, or Capous Avenue. And there'll be a lot of family fun activities, music, food. So definitely bring your children and head down there on Saturday afternoon. Thank you.
Do any other council members have announcements at this time?
I have one. I'll announce what Norma gave us just earlier, that there's a Mother's Day baby pantry collection on Saturday, May 7th, and it's like Sunday, May 8th, from 10 until 3:00 p.m. at Naug Park. They're looking for diaper sizes, newborn, 4, 5, and 6, and pull-ups, 4T, 5T, all sizes accepted, baby wipes, baby food, cereal formula, blankets, diapers, diaper bags, pacifiers, baby bottles, infant and toddler car seats, and no clothing, please. So that's May 7th and May 8th at Naug Park. I'd also like to thank, you know, the, I guess would be the Hill Neighborhood Association in conjunction with the Recreation Authority and so many volunteers that showed up at Naug Park this past weekend for the cleanup. It was pretty well attended. A lot, I think we got a lot of work done to help spruce up Naug Park, and I was happy to participate in that along with Councilman Dunneehue and Councilman Rothschild. And the park is looking better and better. Tremendous amount of work is going into Naug Park, including the fountains in front of the Everheart Museum, and they're doing work on the mine, trying to reopen that. So it's really looking nice for our city park. Thank you.
Any other council members have announcements at this time?
Yes, I do. The, there's going to be a parks cleanup by the Greenwood Neighborhood Association. The dates are May 7th at the islands on, at Capous and Electric Street, and then May 27th at Pretzel Park on North Washington Avenue. That's all.
And I just have one, that an executive session was held this evening to discuss personnel and labor contracts. Mr. Waldenberg?
Fourth Order, citizens' participation.
Joan Hodewanitz?
Joan Hodewanitz, Scranton. I don't know how many of you saw this article in the paper on the 24th. It was an article written by Mary Jo Sheridan, your former treasurer. It's entitled "Battle Corruption With Fiscal Responsibility." And she's talking about how good accounting can help the city overcome its reputation for corruption. So I want to read some of this because it's not only something that every city official should read, but every taxpayer too. Financial management teams should monitor vendors for contract compliance. What does this mean? It means administrators and staff should routinely review and report internally and to the public, not merely at budget time with consolidated numbers that hide activity. Also, data should be analyzed to identify trends and anomalies. Reports to the public should be meaningful and easy to understand. How do the numbers compare to prior year-to-date numbers? How do they compare to contract terms and trends for comparable goods and services industry-wide? Do treasurers and controllers effectively fulfill their duties to ensure the collection of revenues and payment of bills are appropriate and accurately recorded and reported? If elected officials and vendors know a government's accounting staff, treasurer, and controller are competent, ethical, and watching the numbers, the environment will be far less inviting for ethically compromised officials to shake down vendors, to steal, misuse, or waste taxpayer money. Now, that only applies not just to city officials, but every taxpayer should be watching the numbers, asking for the numbers, demanding explanations and following up. You know, you get the government you deserve, and if you're not going to put in the sweat equity into your government, you're going to get hosed. Speaking of getting hosed, the caucus tonight. If you didn't sit up there with a paper copy of the slides and you had to sit back there behind the railing, how useful would that caucus have been? Couldn't hear, couldn't see. What's wrong with taking those slides and posting them next week in third order?
We'll do that.
You know, similar caucuses that have slides like that. You've got to share them with us. We're stakeholders. We're the ones who fork over the money.
We will do that. We didn't receive the slides until this morning to...
I understand, but routinely, it should be automatic. The next week, they're in third order.
It will be in third order next week.
Yeah, and speaking of follow-up. This is day 116 of the year. It's April 26th. A quarter of the year is gone. What is the status of the labor union contracts?
They're still ongoing to the best of my knowledge.
Okay, was there genuine progress made? Did you get your information you asked for last week?
That involves negotiations that I can't really discuss publicly.
Did you get any specifics? I mean billable hours for Mr. Uffberg's firm for his $97,000?
I guess we are currently negotiating the transfer of those documents.
Yeah, our solicitor's going to review them with the city solicitor.
Okay, if there's nothing confidential about them, please put them in third order next week.
That's what we're still...
Okay, I would love to see that. And the sound system? Should I make a donation in my will, you know, a legacy? So that when I'm dead, we can hear back there?
We have a meeting set, I have a meeting set up on Thursday to start outlining how we're going to go about doing that.
Okay, so let it be written, so let it be done.
I'm hopeful that we could get that work done during our August recess, and then when we come back in September, we have that fixed.
I'm going to hold you to that.
I'm hopeful. Next on the list, Norma Jeffries.
Good evening, council. Norma Jeffries, Scranton resident. And I had to chuckle when Joan gets up and starts talking about things, because as I was away for three weeks, and my son got married, which is always a wonderful thing for a mom, you know, when they go ahead and do what they're supposed to do. So, but I did look at the Youtubes and watch some of them. And I told Marie when I came in, I said, "How many years have you been talking about the stormwater? How many years?" I've been coming to council, I've been back in town, I guess, that's almost five years now, and I've been coming to council four years, and each time she's talking about stormwater, "Stormwater." And I'm not sure if there's any advancement yet or not. They talked about it a little bit, from what I could hear from the presentation, I think the word "stormwater" was used. I'm not sure what they were talking about, because I agree with Joan. You know, I sat there and listening, and you can't hear a thing. But something's funny, though, when you hear YouTube, but this is not, I don't think the caucuses go on YouTube, I don't think.
The public ones do.
The public ones?
When we have our normal ones, they don't, but when we have guests in, they go up on YouTube.
Okay, so then I'll be able to listen to that then and hear, because you do get good volume and good sound when you listen to the YouTube. But, you know, so anyway, that's what I did. I did follow you guys when I wasn't being entertained, but, you know, council is a part of my life now. Let's see what's going on. So, one of the things I wanted to talk about, and I do thank Bill King for addressing the drive-through for the Mother's Day weekend, but I just wanted to also thank all the volunteers. Naug Park is run all by volunteers. No one up there is paid. We all are volunteers, there's the board members up there. We have our meeting on the first Thursday of the month, and you're all welcome to come and to just help us make the decisions for the park, because we all enjoy the park when you go there. It's such a, you know, they refer to it as the jewel of Scranton, and it is. It's definitely a jewel of Scranton. And when we call for volunteers, we don't mean just the young. I was volunteering, I've had knee surgery, and the other lady that was with me, she had some other issues. So what we did to help, we volunteered. We gave out the rakes and the bags and these little grabber things for people to pick up. So, you know, there's something for everyone to do, no matter what your physical capabilities are. You know, there's something to be done for you up there at Naug Park. So I put the notice out that we will be having our meeting on Thursday night, the first Thursday of every month, at 6:00 at the, at the community room up at Naug Park. So I'm just hoping that, you know, my little flyer can go up. I'll be putting them around in our grocery stores in the neighborhood, so that everyone can see that we're doing this drive for St. Joe's, and that we can, you know, bring in a good amount of supplies for them, because they do. Now, the reason that they said they don't need clothes is that a lot of people bring things, the clothes, you know, their kids, that they've outgrown things and all. So they drop those kind of things off, so they don't really need clothes. A little, some people were a little bit annoyed by that, but, you know, they want the donations to be those that are most effective and that will be used mostly by the, by the members that come to get things, okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one question on that. For the diapers, do they have to be unopened? Or could they be opened? Because I have sizes, you know, 1, 2, and 3 that are open that we didn't get a chance to finish. Could I bring unopened or opened?
You know, I'll get back to you, pal. I'll ask them. I was talking with the lady today, and, you know, we don't want used ones.
No, 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 yeah.
But you can tell when they're not being used, because that little tape on there.
Yes, absolutely.
You know, that little tape, you know right away that they're good enough, you know. But I'll check it out for you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Next on the list is Dave Dobson.
Good evening, council. Dave Dobson, resident. Where are we here? Okay. I don't know if it's a dead issue, but last, a few days ago, we had three firemen injured and taken at a hospital when a floor collapsed. And, see, I read my Scranton times. Anyway, it popped into my head, well, gee, maybe we could use a couple extra firemen. So if it's not viable, it's not viable, but it could use a little more consideration. This is, involves everybody, everywhere. And we had another anti-vax, an anti-mask hero here last week. Well, I'm on my fourth vaccination, and I'm still here. You know, get vaccinated. Don't think you're some kind of hero by running around the country in a big diesel truck and going nowhere and protesting. I don't care much for protests, because as soon as the troublemakers show up, then you're liable to get arrested for absolutely nothing. So I work in traditional. If I believe in somebody, I'll even consider working for them. I read the other day that our credit union building is going to the county again. Another building off the rolls in Scranton. It'll never, probably never be back on the rolls. And we really need to petition the state to take up for some of these property tax losses. And there was something I heard from the tax collector about a friendship house building downtown or something. I'm not against anything, but the only thing I am against is paying all the more and more taxes for the whole county and the state. It's their constitution that requires this. So, that being said, I think it's about time they open up their wallets a little bit and not tax people out of their houses and homes in Scranton trying to make up the difference. And last week, I mentioned, so I made a mistake there. It wasn't the American Accountability Federation, it was Foundation. And of course, it's financed by none other than Donald Trump. And one of their main methods is right out of the Putin playbook to accuse politicians of being groomers and pedophiles. Now, there was almost a shooting in New Jersey. A guy walked in with an AR-15 and shot into the ceiling, and there was, there wasn't even a basement. There's supposed to be pedophilia productions downstairs. You know, and this crazy boom, 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 you know, into the ceiling. And there was nothing going on there. It was a QAnon baloney. So there's a couple of organizations you should watch out for. The Heritage Foundation, American Accountability Foundation, American Family Council, Fox News. Essentially, it's totally disgusting when I hear a reporter that he's siding with Putin. And Rand Paul from Kentucky just called the Ukraine part of Russia. Now, so the point is that we have to put up with these people out of these other states. They affect you, they affect me, they affect everybody. And it's a real shame, because if anybody's an embarrassment, they are, not Joe Biden. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dobson.
By the way, I'm proud of the aid he's given to countries, even humanitarian aid. He's sent it to Poland and everywhere else. So stop your barking and find something productive to do. Have a good night.
Thank you, you too. That exhaust design sheet, would anyone else like to address, council?
Good evening, Marie Schumacher. Tonight is sort of a whatever happened tonight, like following Joan. I believe we were told in February, the acoustics were going to be improved in this room. So whatever happened to that?
We've...
What, yeah, I heard what you said, so we'll hope.
Yeah.
Whatever happened to Sorento? Where are the figures on maintenance? And who's paying for those?
Our request for a public caucus is still out there. We're still waiting a response from the chief. We're hopeful, we're hopeful that in the next few weeks.
Maybe you need an arm twisting rather than invitation. Another one, Naug Pool, Naug Park Pool Complex. We spent money for that expensive report, and they came back with everything from, you know, lazy river and all kinds of things. And now which one has been picked?
We haven't selected one yet. We're still trying to put the puzzle pieces together in terms of the funding.
Now, what are you trying to put together?
The puzzle pieces in terms of the funding. We did receive a grant from DCNR, I believe, for $2 million. We have a $2 million match, and we have some other funding opportunities that are still out there.
Is there going to be any water there this, this summer?
This summer, no.
Nothing again?
I'm going to be realistic and honest with you. We're looking at 2024 by the earliest.
Okay, the Pocket Park.
I did get an update on that last week, too. The fill, the fill is being tested a second time. Once it passes inspection, the fill will go in, and then construction will, you know, the actual work will begin once it's filled and settled. With the completion by the end of this construction season for the Pocket Park.
Okay, when are we ever going to get a land bank report? I don't recall ever seeing any information on how many properties they've taken, how many they've sold, how they've been used. Okay.
We'll request that.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions, too. On the, have you, has anybody checked to see how many taxpayers paid their property taxes in full? And how does it compare with what you had in the, in the, yeah, in the budget for how the cash flow was going to go? And when are we going to see a cash flow report?
We'll request that. I did get numbers, but I think it was in a conversation. It wasn't in writing, but I'll get it in writing on the taxes.
Okay, and... I thought I had another one. Oh, yes, on the next phase of Meadow Brook, how many of those rights-of-way have been under contract?
I believe the bidding either is about to close, or the bid timeline is about to close or did close in the last week for the services, for appraisals and surveying over there. I know that was put out in the last couple of weeks. I just can't remember the timeline.
Okay, and then, and last week, Mr. Schuster mentioned right at the end about the, there was the final, a signature was given. What is, what is the next step in that, now in that process?
So I believe that, and I have to double-check with this, but the DEP permit had to be amended, and I was told that wasn't going to take too long and should have been done by now. So now I believe it's just a matter of time of just scheduling the work to be completed with the property owners.
And that would have been after that last signature, correct? Or...
Yes, as soon as the last signature came in for that, they were able to send the amended, the request to amend the DEP permit to DEP.
Does that clean-out have to be contracted out? Or is the DPW going to do that?
It was already bid out, based off an emergency declaration in the fall. So that's why we have that price tag for it. So now it's just a matter of just scheduling with the homeowners for access to the hall.
Superb, okay, my time is up, thank you.
So, yeah, that was last Tuesday afternoon. I don't know what time it was, maybe 3:00. We got an email saying that the last property owner had signed off. They should be able to start moving ahead with that. So now, yes, it's just going to be scheduled with the property owners and when the crews get out there.
Yes, because the property owners did, you know, sign off for the initial.
Yeah.
But to go back in, we had to amend the DEP permit. So they had to sign off on the amendment to it. And there was one property owner that took a little longer than expected, but that came in last week. So we just need that amended permit, and then to schedule the crews to go out there.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address, council?
Tom Coyne Menucha. Members of council, as the mayor is speaking forward, the microphone in front of her in caucus is pushed away by the cornucopia of paperwork in front of her that excludes the microphone from picking up the volume. I understand she is projecting forward the voice from you, but without that microphone, the speakers do not work. The speakers in the back work fine for any of these speakers here who properly have a speaker and have a microphone in place. It is not totally the fault of the sound system in here. It is a matter of having a microphone completely away from your face when you speak. I will wait in fifth order to find out if we have any responses yet on the DUI for the police officers. The city community plan that was shown today, we were shown the popular vote and the city's plan. Then we switched to another slide, and it looked, though I did not have a copy of it, it looked like the slide of the proposed plan ignored the entire intent of the popular vote and reverted back to what the original plan was without the input of the community. I'll have to be able to look at those slides to verify it, but when I looked at the color matching from the first, from the first screen to screen 5 on their presentation, it looked like the edits that the public put in place were completely disregarded. ARPA funding. I've requested before, who were the community movers who started this plan? The unnamed people. We have yet to figure out with all of the meetings who these unnamed community people came together in secretive meetings to bring up this plan before it rolled forward. There are no names, there are no groups, there are no communities disclosed. And without that, there is no way for a citizen or anyone to decide whether or not someone has come in, put in their input for their own self-serving interest to direct funds in a form of nepotism to their own business or business dealings. Without clarity of who was involved in the initial setup of this before it even went to this group, we're blind to be able to audit whether or not there are personal fingers in this before it even gets to the population. In this document, it notes that we are upgrading the city environment. Why are we upgrading the city's IT environment and the IT structures when we are outsourcing it? If we're getting rid of the IT, and we're getting rid of most of it in-house, and it's going to be handled by .gov and other organizations, then why are we improving it here? Why are we buying a new car for a garage that we're about to sell? Last week, I talked about the electric vehicles. I said I thought that I had saw an article out there for the funding for these electric vehicles. vehicles coming from the ARPA funding. I was told that I shouldn't, I shouldn't believe everything that I read. What I noticed in this slide here was electric vehicles. Line 6.01, line six on that, surprisingly enough, out of these funds has electric vehicles. It seems that four weeks before this even came up, when this council was asked for funding for some of the plans to vote on, electric vehicles were put forward out full funding. And out of the documentation today, it seems that was cut out of the top of it to be put in this plan. Again, there are choices on electric vehicles, but it gets a little bit discomforting when the city takes money off the top for its own self-serving interests and allocates that prior to the input and the health and the structure of the community. And we have people who need money, not charities who do testing, but people who need to eat who are put at the back of the line. This is an issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address counsel this evening? Mr. Waldenberg?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. King, do you have any motions or comments this evening?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Schuster, do you have any motions or comments?
No, nothing at this time.
Dr. Rothschild, do you have any, do you have any motions or comments?
I do not, thank you.
I just have a couple of things in terms of Mr. Coyne's request on the two SPD officers. We are still waiting official response from Chief Carroll. I did bring it, you know, we did bring it up with the mayor before, too. So we're hoping to get a response soon. Mr. Waldenberg, would we be able to request an update on a request I sent to you a couple of weeks ago regarding water runoff at 339 Wheeler Avenue? It was in the code enforcement report, but there was nothing, no action taken.
I'll get an update.
The resident reached out to me again last night. Thank you. And there's also another thing to send along to code enforcement. There was an issue with garbage in the 200 block of Sherwood Court between Linden Street and Roslyn. And I actually took a ride by in there last night and it is a complete mess and I can't really tell where it's originating from, but if we could send code enforcement out there on that as well.
I'll take care of it, sir.
And that is all I have for this evening. Thank you. Schuster?
One, one thing I have, Frank. We did get a response. So the questions I asked about the labor council billing, we did get the response back. And I sent back a response to you last night to, to send forward to the administration or to the, the current solicitor that's working on it. I did speak with him in executive session that I'd still be looking for that information and how to move forward with redaction if need be. So if you could move forward that email I sent last night.
I will follow up in the morning, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just one comment. It had been brought up in the past about the segregation of funds with the garbage fee and the general fund. We brought that up as well. And we were told that that's currently under litigation. So it couldn't be discussed at this time. That's what we were told by the city, the city's attorney.
Thank you. Mr. Waldenberg?
5B for introduction and ordinance, creating and establishing special city account number as noted entitled Finance Director for the receipt of and disbursement of grant monies from the Willery Foundation and Lackawanna College for payment of the new Finance Director position for the city of Scranton.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
I make a motion.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, as this piece has come up before us a couple of times and now we're accepting, we're, we're looking to establish a special account for this. I am going to be voting no to this. I am against this, this private funding for this city position here. And to be clear, council did vote on this, on the original intent of this legislation over a year ago. And the original intent was to look at lowering the city's taxes. So I'm going to read it again. This is the third time I've read it. The monies of $50,000 was to undertake a study to evaluate tax policy, billing and collections with the goal of increasing collection rates, strengthening internal controls, eliminating waste, and improving tax relief for the city of Scranton. I voted yes for the initial intent of this, of this document, but I am against this funding going to the private, the private funding of this position in the city. That's all.
Anyone else on the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it and so moved?
5C for introduction, a resolution approving in accordance with section 147F of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended. A plan of financing of the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority and declaring that it is desirable for the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the city of Scranton for Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority to undertake a project for the North Pocono Public Library.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved?
5D for introduction, a resolution authorizing the director of the Department of Public Works of the city of Scranton to sign the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation Form M 950AA, authorizing Riley Associates City Engineer to act as an agent and submit highway occupancy permits on behalf of the city of Scranton.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved?
5E for introduction, a resolution authorizing the city of Scranton to accept an A 2022 mower max MMB Gen 3 per by board cooperative purchasing contract number 3861 with Atmax Equipment Company from Keystone Sanitary Landfill.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved?
5F for introduction, a resolution ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton to the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program for the Kaiser Avenue Flood Mitigation Design Narrative.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5F be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved?
5G for introduction, a resolution amending resolution number 48 2022 entitled Reappointment of Jerry J. Weinberger Esquire, 611 North Webster Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18510, as a member of the Board of the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority. Mr. Weinberger's term will expire on December 31, 2027 to reflect the end of Mr. Weinberger's term as December 31, 2024.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5G be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
Just on the question, we, we had already gone through these, but they have since changed the end of the term for all of them. Is that, or it wasn't included initially, or?
I believe the end of the term was in there for 2027 where on all of them, and it should have been 2024 for 5G and 5H and then 2025 for 5I.
Okay.
Instead of 2027.
Just for clarification, thank you.
So also on the question, that was going to be similar to my question, was there a mistake made that these were five-year, granted a five-year term and they've now changed to two or three?
I don't know if it was staggered terms where the appointments might have been held over, but we could find that out.
Yeah.
Mr. Waldenberg, could you be able to see what the issue was there?
And this is just introduction, so we'll have the answer before we ultimately vote it through. Thank you.
Anyone else on the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved?
5H for introduction, a resolution amending resolution number 49 2022 entitled Reappointment of David Fanoff, 1812 Academy Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18504, as a member of the Board of the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority. Mr. Fanoff's term will expire on December 31, 2027 to reflect the end of Mr. Fanoff's term as December 31, 2024.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5H be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved?
5I for introduction, a resolution amending resolution number 50 2022 entitled Reappointment of William R. Lazar, CPA, PFS, CFE, 677 Mary Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18508, as a member of the Board of the Scranton Lackawanna Health and Welfare Authority. Mr. Lazar's term will expire on December 31, 2027 to reflect the end of Mr. Lazar's term as December 31, 2025.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5I be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved?
Sixth order, no business at this time. Seventh order, 7A for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, resolution number 56 2022, appointment of Marissa Duffy, 105 Peak West Drive, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18505, as Parks and Recreation Director for the city of Scranton effective April 11, 2022.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Dunningham?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for Adoption, resolution number 57 2022, accepting a donation presented to the city of Scranton Fire Department from Greg L. Sunday and Joan M. Sunday in the amount of $5,000 in memory of Scranton firefighter Stephen Sunday to purchase equipment.
What is the recommendation of the vice chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety?
As vice chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Dunningham?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for Adoption, resolution number 58 2022, accepting a donation from the Griffin Pond Animal Shelter of a Dean &amp; Tyler K-9 Bite Suit in the amount of $1,360.38 provided to the city of Scranton.
What is the recommendation of the vice chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety?
As vice chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Dunningham?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for Adoption, resolution number 59 2022, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a lease purchase agreement with Leasing 2, Inc., to finance the purchase of a Sutfin Custom Rescue in the amount of $715,000 for the city of Scranton Fire Department for a period of seven years commencing May 1, 2022.
What is the recommendation of the vice chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety?
As vice chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item 7D.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, Frank, could we reach out to the fire chief and just see, there was reference made here that this vehicle was an older vehicle from 2009? Can we just send correspondence asking, what's the usual lifetime of some of these vehicles and what years, what are the years of the other vehicles in the fire department?
I will, sir.
Thank you.
And I just, just to add on to that, I think some of the backup did state that, you know, the rescue truck is something that goes out on every call, whereas not, not all the engines or trucks go out on every call, but the rescue is one that goes out on every call.
Yes, I did see that in the background.
And they, they have been having issues with it, I believe, for the last year or so. I believe they were using the hazmat truck as the rescue truck for a little while, too. But just to add on to that.
Thank you.
Anyone else on a question? Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Dunningham?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7D legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth order, 8A filed to council number 9, 2022.
This piece of legislation is the updated zoning ordinance. It is still tabled to allow for additional input and any changes via amendment. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.[1780.71][1780.71]